Yuba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self-storage in Plumas Lake where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at Plumas Lake self-storage.com.
Dana Kennedy. Anna Maria Rodriguez. Justin Jones. Kristen Rosalini. Teresa Agarenzo. Janet Garrison. Ruth Vargas. Erica Garcia. Jacqueline Jackson. Laura Hannam. And Wendy Mater. All right. All right. So I know that's a large group, but we do, I think we're gonna try to get a photo with all of them. Yeah, group photo. So everyone that received their 10 years of service, if you can kind of gather around the board of supervisors there for a photo, that'd be great. Everybody with 10 years of service kind of scooch on back in for a photo. All right. So next up, we have 15 years of service. All right. So Andrew Thomas, 15 years of service. Heather Wolf. Jared Reed. Martha Hernandez. Olivia Lopez. Jeff Lake. Christopher LaRue. And Steve Cameron. Oh. Yeah, yeah. All right, Steve.
Okay, I have the privilege of announcing the 2025 year and we have one 35-year service award. Starting with 20-year Miranda Johnson. Melinda Mangum. Tabitha Edwards. Philip Bronson. William Davis. Barbara Walker. Marlo Romero. Matt Ricardi. Monica Lara. Patty Hunt. Felica Schmidt. Shayya Kamaka. Stephanie Smith. Kathy Jordan. And Jason Otero. Oops. Okay. 25 years of service, Kevin Mallon. Michelle Logan. Joe Oats. Sheriff Wendell Anderson. Elizabeth Rodriguez. James Davis. Harry Peters. Billy Yang. Ben Martin. Lori McDaniel. Julia Yang. Okay. 35 years of service, Robin Tomoza.
Everyone.
So you're doing the proclamation. Now, the Blue Shift Project.
That's what I do. I try to make it bigger.
This my. Is this working now? No. What? Thank you. Well, that was inspiring. This is an amazing family. If we're gonna move on to a couple of proclamations, the first is to the Blue Shift Project of Yuba Sutter, recognizing May 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Month. And Supervisor, that's like is going to help me on this one. This one working? Great. Erica, how you doing? Okay, we're honoring May 2024 as National Maternal Mental Health Month. Whereas nearly 1,200 babies are born in Yuba County every year. Yuba County recognizes the strain of the prenatal period on the mental health and well-being of women, their children, their families and communities. And whereas one in three new and expectant mothers in California experience moderate to severe symptoms collectively known as prenatal mood and anxiety disorders, including depression, panic disorders, obsessive compulsive disorders, post-traumatic stress disorder, and other conditions including postpartum psychosis, a mental emergency or medical emergency that poses an immediate threat of suicide in emphate and has been referred to as the number one complication of childbirth. And whereas prenatal mood and anxiety disorder can develop at any time during pregnancy or months after childbirth. And untreated, they, it can impact not only the mother, but also negatively affect birth outcomes, including mother-infant attachment and bonding, child development, including infant mental health and brain development, as well as the well-being of the entire family unit. And whereas with proper awareness, education, intervention and pro- and access to specialized care and resources, prenatal mood and anxiety disorders are nearly 100% treatable. An early identification, intervention and treatment has significant, has significant potential to save lives, prevent the unnecessary suffering and trauma experienced by so many families following childbirth. And whereas increasing public awareness is crucial in addressing prenatal mood and anxiety disorder and by educating citizens, government agencies, community-based organizations and local businesses, we can reduce stigma and improve access to necessary resources and support and support for affected women and their families. Now, therefore, the Yuba County Board of Supervisors proclaims May 2024 as National Maternal Mental Health Month throughout the county of Yuba and commends the Blue Shift Projects of Yuba Sutter. Thank you. We have a second proclamation. This is to the Childcare Planning Council of Yuba and Sutter Counties, recognizing May 2024 as National Childcare Provider Appreciation Month. Recognizing National Childcare Provider Appreciation Month, May of 2024. Whereas Childcare Awareness of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on the month of May 2024. And whereas childcare has provided a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy. The pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being, well-being and economic security of Yuba County's young children, families and communities. And whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses, run staffed predominantly by women, continue to recover from the health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic to meet the needs of more families. And whereas Yuba County recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities and the economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare by providing support and resources during the pandemic. And whereas the future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for the high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. And now, therefore, be resolved, the Yuba County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 2024 as National Childcare Provider Appreciation Month throughout the county of Yuba and urges all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities. Yeah, it's a wonderful project. Okay. Okay, next we have, we're gonna receive a quarterly update from Health and Human Services.
Morning Chair members of the board. My name is John Corneal, the Assistant Director with Health and Human Services. The Employee Recognition Awards are always a tough act to follow. I am glad they went first. So there's not 100 people in the room anymore. Make this less of a stressful proposition here. So I'm here to deliver the Health and Human Services Quarterly Report for the quarter of January through March 2024, third quarter of the fiscal year. Our report takes a little bit of a different format this time. This budget season, fresh on the heels of the governor's May rebis from Friday, we thought we would talk a little bit about our budget. And what I plan to do today is start at sort of the 30,000-foot level and get a little bit closer and closer to the ground as we go through the presentation. Ultimately, end up kind of where we do with every presentation and talk about some very specific projects that we're implementing at the department in the community. So getting started here, we've added some, some of our colors to this slide, but this is, this is kind of your standard budget information that you're probably familiar with seeing. This is how it's broken out for our department. You'll see it come this way from the CAO. We've got in the furthest left column with the numbers, you've got all of our totals for the various divisions that we oversee in Health and Human Services. So this is, this is what you normally get, but we thought we could hopefully contextualize and make this information a little more digestible or understandable. At least I, I need to have it presented to me that way. So when we look at the, we'll first talk about where the money for Health and Human Services comes from. There's three main sources. Our largest source is allocation funding. Allocations are money calculated by the state or the feds and they gather that money into, into a pot. And they say Health and Human Services, you have to do these specific things to have this money. We perform those services. We time study to them, our staff write down the amount of hours that they've performed and every quarter, we enter that information into a system and claim it. And then however much we've spent for each of these allocations, the state reimburses us that money. Allocations, there's a few things to point out about allocations there. First of all, they're capped, so we can spend up to whatever the allocation amount is. If we go over that amount, we're not going to be reimbursed for that. So we try very strictly to not exceed whatever our allocation is. We have, our big allocations are for generally for the CalWorks program, for Medi-Cal, or CalFresh. Those are kind of the big ones. So we, we try to spend as much of that money as we can, but not any more of that money than we've been allocated. That's kind of the first thing. Another thing to note about allocations is that they, they don't roll over from year to year. So we have this much money that we can spend, however much has been allocated. And if we don't spend it, we, we don't get to use any of that money in the following year. The next source of money that is our, our second largest is called realignment. And there's a couple of different sources of realignment. Realignment was a budgeting maneuver that the state took in 1991 and in 2011. And what it did was it transferred funding and the responsibility for a whole host of programs over to counties. So all counties have realignment funding that they get. It comes from a half-cent sales tax and vehicle license fees in the state of California. And because of that, like, sales tax fluctuates and vehicle license fees fluctuate. So realignment funding that comes to counties, that fluctuates as well. So in general, it's considered a best practice to keep a reserve of realignment money. And that leads into another point about realignment funding is that it actually does carry over from year to year. So if we don't spend all of our realignment money, we keep that balance and it carries into the next year. So an interesting point about this amount that we have budgeted here, we have almost 37 million, 36,960,000. That is actually more realignment budgeted than we actually have revenue. So we've got over, a little over 35 million in realignment revenue for a single year. We had to, for this budget here, we had to draw from our realignment reserves to be able to balance the HHS budget. So this, this funding too is tied to specific programs that have to be performed. That was part of the original realignment creation as all of these programs came over with this funding. So this funding is intended to operate the various programs that were determined at that time when realignment was created. There's a, a very good course that CSAC offers if anybody is interested in learning like all, everything about realignment, how it's calculated, where it came from, the background of everything. It may be multiple days, maybe it just felt like it was multiple days, but it's at least a full day. A very detailed course. If you're interested in the, the full background of realignment, I recommend looking into that course from CSAC. And then finally, the last source that we have a slide dedicated to is grant funding. And grant funding makes up about 7% of our budget. And grant, grant funding is tied to hyper-specific duties that we have to perform. Grants are sometimes competitive. We apply for grants. If we're awarded, there's a scope of work that is, is down to the very detailed level of deliverables that we have to perform in, in order to meet the grant and be able to have the funding. Grant, grant funding can be clawed back sometimes or audited. Grant, grant funding can be clawed back sometimes or audited. So we're, we're talking, you know, you, you must give out X amount of bike helmets during this duration of this grant. You have to post X amount of times on social media about this program, like very, very specific deliverables associated with grants. This grant money after you apply for it, it, it can come in a lump sum or it could be apportioned out, but sometimes they last for several years. Sometimes grants are only for a single year. And that can also be a drawback for this grant funding. It, it does sometimes make it difficult to stand up and operate a sustainable program when we're not sure if that revenue is going to continue. So there is, there is another, if you add up all these numbers, I think all the percentages, you get around ninety eight percent. The total budget for this year that we're looking at was a hundred million, four hundred and eighty eight thousand. There's about two and a half percent left out here, and those are miscellaneous fees that kind of come from everywhere. Miscellaneous revenue that come from everywhere. We have maybe fifty thousand roughly in fees that we collect over the counter for doing vital statistics transactions, like birth certificates come at a, a cost. There's about a hundred thousand that we budget for, for overpayment and over issuance. Receiving that back from residents if they've been issued too many CalFresh and have to pay it back. There's a, you get a Sutter County share of general fund for the Veterans Department. Same thing for our Bay County Health Officer salaries. So there's, there's little bits here and there that make about another two and a half percent of the budget. But in general, that's the HHS budget, a kind of a, a bird's eye view here. We've got allocations, realignment, and grants. So we have all that money. We have a hundred million, four hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. What happens with that money? So we'll look at our, our big three divisions. First here, we have Public Assistance. And they administer the CalWorks, CalFresh, and Medi-Cal programs primarily. They operate with a forty nine million dollar budget. And you've got up at the top here, we've got the percentage of residents in the community.
John, you can, you can minimize that box to the side.
Great suggestion. Thank you. So in the, in the community, we've got about two percent of the community receiving CalWorks, twenty three percent, almost a quarter receiving CalFresh, thirty seven percent of residents receiving Medi-Cal. There's the, the raw numbers underneath that. And because of the duplicative nature of these programs, like many people receiving CalFresh also receive Medi-Cal, many people receiving CalWorks also receive CalFresh and Medi-Cal as well. Unduplicated, it's, it's generally over forty percent of residents are receiving some sort of public assistance from HHS. So that was Public Assistance. We have the Child and Adult Protective Services Division. We call them CAPS for short. About a thirty six million dollar budget. And you can see some of the, some of the metrics here, what, what they, what they've accomplished with that thirty six million dollars. Five hundred and sixty children placed, six hundred and fifty eight referral investigations when the community refers an allegation of abuse to our office. That's, that's how many they've investigated over, well, one thousand two hundred and ninety six in-home supportive services cases being managed. And many applications there as well. And Public Health, Public Health primarily is grant funded. They have realignment funding as well for, that, that mostly covers overhead in the department. But about a fourteen million, eight hundred and seventy seven thousand dollar budget. Some of the highlights here in the Public Health Program. Sixty-two Narcan kids distributed just in the first month of that project. We expect that to ramp up as awareness is spread and as we get our feet on the ground with, with the community and they understand where they can get that resource. Two hundred and forty-six families, total of six hundred and eighty-three individuals housed with our housing programs. The Public Health Program includes not only health education, but also all of our housing programs. And then just another highlight, eighty bike helmets distributed, two hundred and seventy-five people educated just at, just at the Baka Festival. So we've shared in the past many of the various events that HHS is now spreading community awareness and doing health education. So that was sort of a breakdown of the three big divisions and their operating budgets. This here shows how much of the HHS budget, about a third goes directly to benefits for our residents. And that is essentially our budget just going right out the door onto E V T cards in the form of CalFresh or CalWorks or checks for foster care payments or adoption benefits or motel vouchers for housing programs. Things that are coming right out of our budget, going to direct payments to our residents for our programs that we administer. So we want to take a moment at this point and talk about what we call the Public Assistance Effect. And that is essentially down, down here in the bottom right, we've sourced an article from C D S S. There's a, that's clickable if you have the soft copy. Basically saying that for every dollar in CalFresh benefits, it's a dollar seventy-nine in economic benefit. Because of, because of the way that dollar is reused over and over. And the general theory is true for any of our programs, not just CalFresh, but that's where that, that's where that sighting comes from. So the example we have here, CalFresh benefits are issued to a resident. They go and spend their CalFresh at Save Mart over here or Food Max by our office. And that money then supports the store. And their employees, that employee goes and spends their money out in the community again and supporting tax dollars and all of our salaries here. So that, the way that dollar is used and reused over and over again. We cite a dollar seventy-nine here with this article. We kind of picked up middle of the road number. Some, some sources go lower around a dollar fifty. Other places are as high as like four times the amount. But we, we went with a dollar seventy-nine, but the, the general theory is just that that, that money is infused into the economy and used over and over again and multiplies. So at this point, let's get a little bit closer to the ground and look at where we contract and who we contract with. Our first stop is the amount of our budget that is spent with community partners. And the term community partners is probably a little subjective, but definitely we included everybody in the direct Yuba Sutter area here. And we also included our state partners. They're a forty-five minute drive up the road, but we work very closely with them for, for the administration of all of our programs. So about thirteen million dollars, twelve million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand of our budget is spent contracting directly with these community partners to administer our programs and be out in the community on our behalf. Our next stop is contracts or generally, more generally MOUs with other county departments. So we have three million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars contracted with all of these county offices listed off on the right-hand side. These are specifically Yuba County departments here. We have some other contracts with Sutter County Departments, but they were excluded from this. And so almost four million just in MOUs to directly pay other departments. But then we'd be neglectful not to mention the, we have A seven on here. If you're familiar with that term, I think it's officially called Cost Plan, the reimbursement. So another three million dollars being paid to other county departments through the Cost Plan or almost seven million dollars total. And then finally, we have, we have professional services contracts with just general companies for either consulting or, or software applications or things, things to enable us to be able to provide better services to our residents for the programs that we administer. So we, these are all just general companies you may or may not have heard of before, to the tune of about one point four million dollars there. So that's the, that's the budget part. We made it through, exciting. Now let's get into the specific programs and, and projects that we're administering now. So our first highlight is a partnership with M J U S D, the Marysville Joint Unified School District. And we, we actually are paying for a position at M J U S D to work directly with our welfare to work clients to help get them either through English as a Second Language courses and, and then G E D courses or, or just G E D if that's all that they need. And then put them on a path to a career, a lot of the time through a certificate program. We've got a few examples down at the bottom, like welding and medical assistant, bus driver. So that's a great benefit to our welfare to work recipients. Oh, and also I guess in the, in the chart as well, you can see the ramp up of participation. It started in January and by March, we've almost got another fifty percent students enrolled there. We also have a partnership with Casa de Esperanza. I've seen them here at the board meetings before. This is a direct pipeline again for our CalWorks recipients. If they, if a social worker discovers that a CalWorks recipient is in a domestic violence situation or anything that would warrant Casa services, they have a direct pipeline now to refer them over so that they can take care, or take advantage rather of all of these services that they provide. So transportation, counseling, advocacy, a, a whole host of fantastic services that Casa de Esperanza provides. We have embedded a, an employee with Adventist Health to help with Medi-Cal enrollment. The applying for and enrolling in the Medi-Cal program is, is complicated on a good day, when, when you're a professional who, who does it for eight hours a day. That's how I started with HHS. There, it, it's complicated and gathering up all the information and verifications is no, no easy task. So if you layer on top of that, the fact that you're going through a medical emergency or you're in the hospital experiencing whatever it is, the, the reason that you're there, it becomes even more complicated and more difficult. So the goal of this position here is to streamline that and get our residents who go to the hospital, don't have medical coverage, get them enrolled as efficiently as possible in Medi-Cal so that they have coverage and that the hospitals can do their, their billing appropriately. We have C S A C courses being taught to, to Yuba County School District. C S A C is commercially sexually exploited children. This is from our Child and Adult Protective Services Division. And there are a few coming up at the one stop. Ultimately, the goal is for the, for the school districts to be educated. And then they can then have parent nights and educate their parents on behalf of their students so that everybody has a better awareness and is trained in, in how to, how to deal with and communicate with people that have, have experienced sexual exploitation trauma. And we have secondary trauma contract with, with Peachtree Clinic. And this is for our social worker staff. They, so social workers generally aren't experiencing primary trauma. They're not experiencing the firsthand trauma of being abused physically or emotionally or financially. But they're constantly in that situation, experiencing that trauma secondhand. So these, this contract of Peach is designed to help, help them with the, help them with the counseling and, and help head off any of these negative effects of secondary trauma that our social workers and all social workers in, in the field experience. So it leads to compassion fatigue, increased absenteeism, impaired judgment. And, and essentially makes, can make a social worker less effective and, and can lead to burnout where they no longer are, are passionate about their job or, or able to do their job as well as, as they should be. We have a partnership with First Five, Yuba, who is just up here. I think we've got. Yep, Theresa's back there. You made it, you made it into the presentation, Theresa. We have an employee embedded with First Five to help with all of their strategic plan goals listed off here on the right-hand side, since HHS and First Five both have an overlapping demographic that we serve and overlapping goals as well. Hands of Hope and the Life Building Center. This is the, the one place, the one-stop shop for anybody experiencing homelessness. Got some metrics and the little infographic off to the side. One thousand five hundred and forty-four intakes completed, sheltered a hundred and fifty-three people. And we're missing this guy here. Sixty-four families prevented from becoming homeless. So they're doing great work over at the, the Life Building Center. And our partnership with Freed, they help with any of our clients that need to apply for social security benefits. They, they can help them through the application process. That is, I described the Medi-Cal application process earlier. And it's complicated, but the social security application process is much, much more complicated. So we've got some metrics off to the left for our different fiscal years of applications that they've, they've helped with and interviews that they've had with clients. And they do some of the legwork to help gather up the supplemental medical documentation that's needed, the very thorough set of verifications that's needed for the social security application. And coming in June twenty twenty four, we are working on a contract with Quorum Medium. And this is going to be a, a big help to our vital records process where it'll save residents money, first of all, to skip the whole notarization process, saving around fifteen dollars for residents that need a certificate of live birth. And then it'll also make it online so that residents don't have to, if they, if they don't want to, they don't have to come into the office and do the transaction in person. So that'll be a great benefit for our residents for the, for birth certificates, birth certificate requests. We are working with the O P U D. Well, we've done this for a few years at this point. And gonna be teaching or, or funding rather the water safety classes for the community. So just another benefit to make public health and water safety and summer safety, make all of this stuff more accessible to our residents in Yuba County. And I've highlighted in the past here, many of the disaster response contracts that we have. We've got all of them listed here. They're all, they're all community partners here. Yuba Sutter Fairgrounds, Camdenville Community Center, Sycamore Ranch. So this is essentially to ensure that in the event of a disaster that our residents have a safe place to go and that they, that they have a place that is as minimally disruptive as possible, so they don't have to leave the county or, or, you know, worst case, they go to the Yuba Sutter Fairgrounds and are in Sutter County, but we have these local places to help make disaster preparedness. Keep it as local as possible and make it as little of a disruption as possible to our residents. make uh disaster preparedness, keep it as local as possible and make it as little of a disruption as possible to our residents. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions?
The chair, not a question, but just um really appreciate that presentation. I thought it was a great really high level and and detailed overview of uh where the money goes and what services you guys provide. So I know as a board member, um we don't necessarily, at least in my case, I don't necessarily engage with health and human services as much as I do with like community development, and so it's great to get this information.
Andy, did you have something?
Through the chair, yes. Would it be possible to get a figure on the funds, homeless funds spent a total, grand total, and hopefully we can also do that from any county funds. The state has a small problem in accounting for billions of dollars spent on the homeless and I'm kind of concerned that we're gonna crawl down that that hole too. The Marysville Joint Unified School District, uh you're getting involved with them in different programs. And I guess this is probably a question for you, for them, not so much for you, but you know, it's my understanding that we're not doing too well in English and math in our school systems and uh uh you know, when making chicken soup first, you get the chicken. And uh I think that uh when you start expanding into different areas when you're not proficient. And I don't consider forty-fifth in the nation for a consistent or proficient in education. Is there is there a question about why you're getting involved with the school district when they have a problem with their their original uh job?
It it John, may maybe that 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 slide um kind of directing back, it it was a program not so much for youth, but or maybe adults that were trying to achieve their GED.
Oh, yeah, yes. I'm sorry. I was uh thinking actually about the uh uh CSEC uh slide. I think we have that as well, but the yeah, the first slide with MJUSD is for is to provide a direct pipeline for our welfare to work clients to be able to achieve their their GED so that they can become gainfully employed and hopefully no longer need the welfare to work program, which is kind of the core mission of the welfare to work program. Your own welfare gets you to work and we see education as a part of that.
Okay, um.
And and it's a certificate programs. I know that uh you Supervisor Vasquez have been a a big proponent of the certificate programs as opposed to this kind of general education stuff. So we're we're actually working toward that too. That's a big part of that program.
Well, we're one of the uh few in Northern California has a union school. The closest school to us is what is it, Tracy or Dublin? Um also, one one little thing about uh our illustrious uh governor says that we are going to be, because we are a sanctuary state, uh we're gonna provide medical for any number of people. And uh have we planned for a massive incorrect in increase in in uh uh medical care?
We um you you mean programmatically from the Medi-Cal side or?
Well, you you tell me how it's gonna hit, but it's gonna hit.
Yeah, so we that was that actually is a great question that ties back into maybe the allocation slide. There's a it can be a different methodology for each allocation, but there's um the state has a complicated formula that they'll use to determine how much money we should get for the Medi-Cal program and they sometimes look at things like that, projected increases, and they may give us more of an allocation. If we're expected to do more, they hand us letters or email, letters to us um. Uh I I get several a day. I usually have, you know, six to read every week on how changes to the way we have to administer our programs and and they're you know, they're they're legislated by decisions at the state. We don't have a lot of choice in that generally, so um it may impact our Medi-Cal funding in the future, though. It's a a good question.
It's like saying the Pope's a little Catholic. Uh we're gonna get massive influx of people. There's just hardcore fact of reality. It's an unfunded mandate from the state. And I'm just wondering if we have seen any increases of any significant increases in our programs.
I don't have those numbers at my fingertips. We can uh definitely check that though and compare our current caseload to prior year caseloads. Another point, though, is uh that um the allocations are divided up by county as well, so we 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 may see an influx, but it probably is different from what they might see in like a San Diego County or LA.
Well, it's I think I can add a little bit to that too, Supervisor Vasquez. Thank you for the question. Um so there has been a recent expansion and change the rules for Medi-Cal that allows for undocumented individuals to receive benefits. Those individuals in our county were previously likely enrolled in CMSP. So we know we had six people that got CMSP previously, and those people will probably roll on to Medi-Cal benefits. Although the complete picture is unknown, because if they continue allowing um undocumented individuals into the state, that number could definitely rise, but we're not seeing a big big increase here in Yuba County yet.
Okay, do we have any firm figures on what the increases have been because of that?
Um we haven't seen a large increase, so it stayed between six and ten cases for us with CMSP. But a lot has changed in the last six months, and so we have not received any additional projections from the state. Um because those allocations are based on case count. If we do receive a rise in the number of cases, it'll correlate to the amount of money that we typically receive within that program.
I would I would really like uh for the Board of Supervisors to be given the amount of increase in in uh aliens benefits and also the homeless dollars spent. Because that's that's a big hole that Sacramento just fell into because of their attitude. The three hundred thousand dollars is a good homeless ho- uh house.
Yeah, we'd be happy to come back or even include in our next quarterly report, the total number and all of the different types of funding. It's pretty complicated in the homeless arena. Um we rated different um grants and things like that, some of them which are proposed to go away and um the governor's announcement on Friday, but we can definitely include that, all of the people served, the total amount of money, where the sources are, and then also continue to provide updates on the number of undocumented individuals we're providing services to.
Okay, cuz I I you know, just Sacramento is is gone crazy with the with the deficit spending because of the lack of accountability on homeless funds.
I think that in regards to homeless, it was about one point five million for fifteen hundred people. Before you leave, I had a question. What is CMSP stand for? And only hit six undocumented workers in Yuba County, which boggles my mind.
It's the County Medical Services Program. There's thirty-five counties that are part of the program that administered benefits to the indigent population prior to the ACA transition to the Affordable Care Act. So when we used to have a lot of people that received Medi-Cal or medical benefits through CMSP, but once the ACA was implemented, that caseload decreased significantly. And so it went down to only about, we've hovered about six to ten people on there. And so with this new expansion, it typically covered people who are not eligible to Medi-Cal, which is a very small population now. So that program has shrunk quite a bit.
So the people who transitioned from CMSP to ACA um were not undocumented workers, though?
No, they were with it under the income level.
So that's the part that I'm confused about. Um is it that undocumented workers aren't using the medical facilities? Are undocumented workers not signing up for the program, or is it there's a lack of undocumented workers in the county? That that I'm curious about which of those.
I I think there's a combination of things. We did see um a decrease in the un- a number of undocumented individuals applying for benefits about five years ago, and that's continued to decline.
Okay, and do you know what the cause of that decrease was?
There was um I think a lot of fear within that population of applying for benefits and having their information shared with the um with the federal government.
Okay, so with the new policy change, we do expect then to see a large rise because that fear is no longer going to be an issue.
Potentially, I think um what they're seeing is a lot of resettlement going on in Southern California and creeping up a little bit into the the Central Valley, but not so much at this point within the northern um counties. So that definitely a possibility there, but we're not seeing a high rise and we've been tracking.
I personally know more than six undocumented workers. That's why I'm confused.
Yeah, there's a lot. There is a lot of stigma associated with applying for these benefits and fear. Um and so we did, I would even say, ten years ago, have a much larger caseload in the CMSP population, but that continues to decline.
All right, thank you.
I think the state was going to give us a heads up if, say, a busload was headed to Yuba County.
Yeah, it's been pretty initially, they were sending out communications to counties where um undocumented individuals were being held like placed or best into, um but those have kind of, I've heard declined, but we continue to monitor that closely and we're not seeing large increases in our caseloads associated with that, but we can definitely come and bring that as a routine item to you guys if you're interested.
Yeah, I have a grant related question. Um a lot of grants come with onerous reporting. Uh do generally speaking, we have the staff to handle the reporting for most grants, or do we have to bring on more staff? And if we do, who pays for them?
Well, we make sure that we are able to meet the grant requirements before applying with whatever staff we have. We try not to uh and and you're you're correct, our grants do come with pretty heavy reporting a lot of the time. Um and we we try not to associate new positions if necessary or or ongoing expenses with grant revenue, cuz we we can't be for certain that it's gonna continue. Um and we don't, you know, we don't, we don't wanna be in a position where we no longer have the funding to fund a position, a a filled position.
And um you mentioned housing earlier. What would be an example of placing people into what type of housing?
Uh well, we have several landlords that we work with locally um. The the you guys are all familiar with the fourteen forward program. We've operated that for, well, we actually no longer operate it, but um that's been part of Yuba County for a long time now, so that acts as our tradition or a transitional rather housing space uh for those that are unhoused. And then we look for a permanent place to house them in a department, apartment rather. And work with our local landlords to to find those spaces.
And all the all the local landlords are pretty responsible type people. I've run into a couple that aren't, so.
I I I I don't uh I think I'm equipped to answer that, but um I in general, I I think so.
Okay, do we have any other uh board questions or comments?
Yes, through the chair, since you just brought that up. I have a question. Is, do you guys have a department that somebody could complain to about housing, rental housing that would go and do inspections, like if they're substandard?
I I don't.
It not not within HHS, but uh code enforcement, environmental health. Uh so within the Community Development Department, there's good people that are available.
Thank you.
Any uh public comment?
Hey, this has just been an uh update, informational update, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are going to public communications. Uh Mary, Izzy, do we have anybody? Izzy, Izzy, you can go ahead and read that public communication statement.
Any person may speak about any subject or concern provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes. And each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. And through the chair, we have one uh comment, Tony Farley.
For the fire from South, so kind of South New City. Hey, I'm getting here here to welcome Sacramento County. Janet, Ben- Bender, Debbie County Council, now she is the council for Yuba County now from Sacramento County. Today, Kevin Guy Ward, Chief of Police in Maryville, Kevin. There's there's two Don Blazer. This is going, I think, five, John Miss, this is four, good back four, this is two, um two. Seth Fuller, good guy, Annie Bassett is one. Thank you, Chris Sir, both of you, including Jen Bender and Kevin. Thank you, Rachel, P L. Hey, Jason, you too. Thank you, of course, um the sheriff and Heather, the manager. Thank you, I'm sheriff. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Jennifer, too, and thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chris Sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony. Thanks for your interest in the community. Uh moving to county departments. All matters listed under county departments are action items, which will be considered and voted on separately. Uh the first is two forty-four slash twenty twenty-four. And who's doing the presentation, anybody?
Ma- Mary, I'm not sure if you wanna queue it up for the the board. You you can rotate that back to, I forgot to.
Mike, okay, so the reason this item is on county departments is because we have received two applications, and the two applications are for the at-large representative to the Yuba County Commission on Aging. And it is for a term to end August eighth. Uh the two applications that we received are from Ms. Denise Sullivan and Ms. Laura E. Drown. You will notice that we did attach a an email that we received from Ms. Denise Sullivan, because she wasn't able to be here today. And Ms. Laura Drown is actually in the audience today, if you have any questions.
Okay, and this goes until August of twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Do each one wanna make a statement or?
We have one, right, through the chair. We have one.
Right.
Okay, so Ms. Laura Drown does wanna speak.
Okay. And the other applicant can't be here and is not on Zoom.
Yes, send a letter. She did send a letter that you should have received.
Okay, got it. Hey, Laura.
Hello. Hi, didn't know about this part, so I don't have anything planned. Again, my name's Laura Drown. I live in the Oliver first area. Um my husband was appointed to the Commission on Aging in March of this year. Um and I ended up attending that meeting with him. And it was at this time that I learned of how this commission and it's really just revamping and coming back into its own. And um and they had an at-large position that was open and um I hate to say it, I I have reached those senior years, so I um I mean, I'm a little more concerned about it now than I would have been in the past. I retired last September, so I have some more time to uh commit to the community and trying to get back to the Oliver first area that we've lived in since uh September of uh twenty sixteen. So um I I've attended a- all of the meetings since March as well as the fact that I also had started attending these Board of Supervisor meetings. My husband and I are both on the uh Yuba County Republican Central Committee. So we've we've gotten a little bit busy over the last few years. And I um they the Commission on Aging is also in need of a secretary. Um and I have been a clerk in numerous things throughout the years, so it's kinda they want me to be their secretary. I think I would um en- enjoy helping out and learning more about the commissioning on aging, and I would very much appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Laura. Did we have any comments? Uh Gary, did you have any comments on the the one that came in?
Sure, just really, really just some general comments. So um you know, I you know, usually when we have these openings, we struggle to fill them. And so I'm really happy to see that we have two applicants, um and not just two applicants, but I believe two very well qualified applicants. Uh I believe it's a actually a bit of a tough decision. Uh it was, it is for me anyway, as to uh which which applicant we should appoint. Um it's unfortunate that uh the one that's my constituent, Ms. Sullivan, uh can't be here today, but I do appreciate her sending in a letter um for the board to kind of read over her qualifications and why uh she thinks she's the one that should be appointed. And so that's that's uh, you know, that's that's really where I'm at, so.
Okay, do we have any other, excuse me, comments before we uh ask for a motion? Okay, do we have any other, excuse me, comments before we, uh, ask for a motion? So we have a motion to, and a second?
Are you going to take public comment?
Yes. I was just about there. Okay, we had more comment and in public comment.
Through the chair, no public comments and none on Zoom.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to nominate, uh, Laura Drown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And aye, and no opposed. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. And this, when does she actually take, uh, start attending?
Sounds like she already started.
Yeah. So good, there's a go tell August of twenty, um, excuse me, twenty-eight or twenty-six, twenty twenty-six.
Yes, through the chair, she'll actually just come in, get sworn in and right away she'll be able to go to their next meeting.
Okay. Congratulations, Laura. Okay, moving on to two thirty, twenty, twenty twenty-four, Sheriff Coroner probation. Um, do we have a presentation on this?
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Stephanie Lucio and I'm the project manager supporting the CalAim Justice Involved Initiative for the Yuba County Jail and the Tri-County Youth Detention Center. Here today to recommend approval of the agreement with Optimist Services Incorporated for the term of July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And the total amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The CalAim Justice Involved Initiative is the first in the nation. Uh, which must be implemented within all California correctional facilities. That includes, uh, county jails and youth detention centers. Uh, by October of twenty twenty-six as required by the state. Currently, Medi-Cal coverage is paused while individuals are incarcerated. And the cost for those services, the medical and behavioral services provided in the facilities, is absorbed by the counties. Uh, this initiative will allow for specific medical and behavioral health services to be billed by the county jail and the tri-county youth detention center. To the state Medi-Cal for up to ninety days prior to release. Yuba County is on track to be one of the first counties in California to go live with this initiative beginning in October of twenty twenty-four. The complex requirements of the CalAim Justice Involved Initiative will require expertise and input that's outside of the understanding that county currently has. Uh, the services provided through this agreement will include research, consult on multiple aspects of pre-release services. Including medication, re-entry care management, durable medical equipment, and clinical, medical, and behavioral health billing. Advise on clinical billing options for the pre-release services, including potential vendors and software. Uh, options that best fit the county's needs. And research, explore and advise on CalAim specifically enhanced care management or ECM. And community supports and their possible implementation within Yuba County. Funding for this agreement will be paid through the path round three justice involved funding allocated by the Department of Healthcare Services to the. Sheriff's Department for its jail and the probation department for its tri-county youth detention center. Uh, with that in mind, uh, it is our recommendation that the board approve the agreement with Optimist Services and if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Hey, do we have any board comment or questions? Any public comments? Hey, do we have a motion?
Move to approve, all second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nobody's opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is, um, two thirty-nine, Community Development and Services, Mike Lee.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow board members. Mike Lee, I'm here today as the county surveyor presenting to you. Uh, I understand your board is interested in a brief summary of, uh, the subdivision process. Tried to distill it down to reasonable discussion, uh, try to keep it somewhat simple if possible. Um, so there have been various forms of land subdivision regulation in California since approximately nineteen hundred. Uh, the current version called the Subdivision Map Act was enacted in nineteen seventy-four and is codified in the government code. Uh, the Subdivision Map Act requires that virtually all, uh, subdivisions of land be approved by a local agency, either a city or a county. Uh, it differentiates a parcel map from a subdivision map. The parcel map is filed for four or less parcels. And four or more parcels is considered a subdivision map. It's a two-step process, um, with the applicant first submitting a tentative map to the, to the county. For review and, um, staff applies conditions of approval to the project. Uh, oftentimes including public improvements. Uh, Board of Supervisors delegated approval authority for, uh, parcel maps to the, to the Development Review Committee, which is comprised of three staff members. And the board also delegated the, um, approval of subdivision maps to the Planning Commission. Um, once, so once tentative map has been approved by either the DRC or the Planning Commission. Uh, the second step in the process is the final map process. Final maps must be prepared by, uh, licensed land surveyors. And they lay out, the maps lay out all the meets and bounds or the bearings and distances for all the parcels. Uh, it identifies the monuments that the surveyor placed. So that, uh, residents, our property owners and other land surveyors can, can reference those, those for accurate, uh, property line locations. Uh, all final maps are reviewed by the county surveyor and ultimately filed with the Recorder's Office. And pursuant to government code six, six, four, five, eight, D, your board by ordinance delegated approval of final maps to the county surveyor. Um, but as a requirement of this delegation, the county surveyor is required to notify. Your board that I'm reviewing the map for final approval and of its impending recordation. And so that is why this item is on, uh, your board agenda today. Uh, the subject project is called North Point Phase One, consisting of a hundred and sixteen single-family lots on thirty-two acres. Uh, project is owned by Lenar and is on the east side of State Route seventy, uh, in the, in the southern tip of the, of the county. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any, if you have more specific questions on this project or the, the subdivision. Process in general, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board or comments?
No. So through the chair, just one quick question slash clarification, as I know it's, uh, come up once before several years ago, so. The point at which really the public can provide input and that the actual approval of the subdivision occurs is at the subdivision map. Uh, the, the tentative map process. And so that's at the planning commission. It's not at this point once. You know, this is really just a notice that it's, that it's being recorded. So, okay.
Absolutely correct, yes.
Anybody else? Where is it again? It's down the east side of seventy?
East, east side of seventy, um, just a little bit north of, you know, the Feather River Boulevard interchange.
Oh, just, oh, okay. So that's a development that's been in the works already.
It's, it's different projects. They had, uh, Lenar's owned, owned most of it, but they did the River Oaks South. Uh, or, or River Oaks East, River Oaks North, and then North Point is, is north of those projects. So they've been developing.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any public comment? Very good. Thank you, um. Hold on one second here. Hey, do we have a motion?
I thought it's information only.
Is this just information? Okay, thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Okay, so for two fifty-eight, this is to approve Bicycle and Pedestrian Mobility Plan, uh, Community Development and Services, Sam Bun.
Good morning to the board, Sam Bun and Public Works. Uh, in April of twenty twenty-two, we received a sustainable transportation planning grant from Caltrans. To complete a bicycle and pedestrian mobility plan. The, although Public Works recommends approving the plan today, we do have Doc and Engineering completed the plan for us to do a quick presentation. I'll hand it off to Ashley with Doc and Engineering, but I'll be here to help with any questions.
I'm short, so I can't really see you guys, but, um, again, uh, again, thank you to the county for hiring Doc and to prepare this plan for the county. Um, it does focus on the unincorporated South County communities of Plumas Lake, Olivehurst and Linda. Um, again, as Sam spoke to, it was funded by a Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. And it's meant to supplement the existing planning documents that you guys already have, your general plan, your bikeway master plan, complete streets plans. So not as a standalone document, but as a supplement. And really its purpose is to help identify future complete streets and active transportation projects. So that the county does have prioritized projects ready for when grants come out. Um, and the grant opportunities are active transportation, grants, safe routes to schools, rails to trellis. I'm sure you guys have heard of those before. Because the county has historically been very successful in obtaining those program grants. Um, and this just provides a mechanism so that you guys can go get more. Um, so with this, we have a small presentation. And so our process we went through, it was kind of multi-pronged. Um, one, you got to first know what's out there. So we did extensive audits of the community. Um, focusing on the schools and a radius around them, thinking that a lot of kids would bike and walk. And so we actually had a bunch of our interns and younger engineers out biking and psych, and walking in the community. And it looked at qualitative as well as quantitative things, like do you feel safe? Like is there a lack of streetlights? But then also things like, are there gaps in the sidewalks? Um, so that was something that was considered in our analysis. We took photos to document. Um, and a, a big other part of this was a community engagement, which I'll touch on a little bit further in the presentation. Um, really, you know, understanding what the community's needs are is so important. Um, and then the third portion of that is the analysis based on factors such as previous accidents. Um, costs, um, community feedback and other considerations. So from that, we developed some maps. So we had the existing, um, bike and pedestrian infrastructure for each of these communities. And we looked at, again, where we could fill in the gaps, where we could, um, complete those networks. And same with all, you know, Linda, Olivehurst, same thing, and then Plumas Lake, um, even though it's a newer development area. Um, there were some improvements that we do recommend. Um, and part of this was revetting through the community. We, um, had an extensive public. Engagement with in-person meetings, but also social media campaign with help from the county. Um, and again, a lot of these projects, it came down to, there's a need, but how do they fit in? So looking again at connectivity attractors. So is it near an elementary school or is it near a shopping center? You know, where are people going? So we looked at that, um, and then costs, a big concern, because if it costs, say, five million dollars to install. You know, three hundred feet of sidewalk because of something, it's like, is that really a feasible alternative versus three million dollars to spend on a mile and a half of sidewalk? So we looked at the cost implications and also benefits to disadvantaged communities. A lot of funding is ranked higher if you do propose your project in a DAC, which the county does have several of those areas. So we looked at. You know, again, these grant programs are all competitive. So how can we make projects that we are recommending more competitive? Um, so we identified nine projects at the top of that list. Um, McGowan Parkway from our Boga Road to State Route seventy. So this is a class two bikeway with ADA ramps and an at-road railroad crossing, um, west of Olivehurst Avenue. Hamilton Smartsville Road, um, we looked at, this is a busy area and it needed a lot of ADA enhancements for ramps. Um, and then a combination of class two bike facilities, as well as drainage improvements and an at-grade railroad crossing. Dunning Avenue, um, is actually outright or was previous this week for design procurement for the county. So. Um, it's cool to see that one of our planning. Identifications of a project is actually coming to fruition. So this is right near Linda Elementary School. Lindhurst Avenue from North Bill to Olivehurst. So this is a ADA ramps, a class four bikeway with buffers. Um, and really providing the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity on Lindhurst. Our Boga Road on the north, um, from Early to McGowan. This again is another class four bikeway. Um, with buffers. It allows for connectivity between Linda and Olivehurst. Simpson Lane, um, this is something that came out of our public engagement. Um, a lot of cyclists are looking for ways to go from the unincorporated communities into Marysville proper. And so Simpson Lane, even though the bridge itself is narrow, um, the roadway on either side of the bridge was appropriate for implementing a class four bikeway. Our Boga Road South and Broadway, so from our Plumas, our Boga to Broadway along our Boga Road, um. Enhancements, again, the ADA improvements, curb and gutter, um, some sidewalk and the implementation of class two bike lanes. And, you know, not just existing roads, but what other paths do people connect, um, especially for recreational uses? So looking at using some of the existing levees, which you guys have plenty of them here in Yuba County. Um, and using those as a class one multi-use trail, so that's for pedestrians as well as cyclists. Um, and lastly, rails to trellis has been a big thing lately, using abandoned railroad grades and turning them into class bikeways. So we identified a segment, um, from Feather River Boulevard down to, um, in the Linda area, down to Feather River Boulevard and Olivehurst. So with that, um, again, this couldn't have been done without the public participation. Um, all of the town hall meetings from the school district at various elementary schools and Lindhurst High School. To the community workshops at the library. We attended a successful connections event. And then lastly, we did our last presentation at Health and Human Services. So really, again, this project, these projects are for the people. And so having that strong community engagement with them was a huge. Part of our effort in developing this plan. Um, one thing we do want to share, the public participation was very high. Um, we typically don't see this sort of response unless we're in like an urbanized setting, like City of Sacramento per se. So we had over two hundred, um, people either come to our community events or do our online survey monkey and, um. Got a lot of great feedback. So, you know, really want to applaud the community. Um, you know, either through the schools or through the bike clubs, there was a lot of feedback and. You know, again, these projects are for the community. So it was great to have their participation. So with that, um, you know, again, thank you guys for the opportunity and we hope that this will help the county win more grants.
Through the chair.
Yeah, I did go ahead.
Can we get a map? Color map, eight and a half by eleven, so we can kind of post that on social media and let people know that there are, there are plans. Contrary to what their opinion is.
Yeah, and it's actually posted on the county website right now, um, but we could also produce.
We could, uh, produce some nice maps to make it easier for sharing online.
Yeah, every, every member of the board would be grateful for that.
I have a quick question. Um, yeah, I think you had a picture of a town hall. I think I saw my gray hair in that group. Um, yeah, I did go to one. I got a little bit confused because, um, there is extensive. Um, routing and plans done by both, um, Blue Zone and CCOG. Pretty thick documents on planned bicycle routes. So does, what we're doing here, does that sort of dovetail into some of their research or?
It does. So this document was meant to supplement all of the other previous planning documents. So this document was meant to supplement all of the other previous planning documents. A lot of those are really large scale, and they look at more broader picture stuff. We were looking at kind of closing in gaps. So we did dovetail off of that. We did make sure that what we were proposing is in coordination with the Bikeway Master Plan, the Complete Streets Master Plans, and all of the Secog documents. But yeah, so we're a supplement to those.
Good, thank you. Any other board input?
Yeah, through the chair, just a couple comments. So first of all, I want to thank the public. It's great to hear that we had so much public participation, also Public Works. I was at a couple of the community meetings, and Public Works was well represented at those meetings, so it was great to see them there. I'm really excited to see some Class 4 bike lanes in the plan, particularly on some very busy streets. So that, that's really exciting. And I'm especially excited about the our Bogota Road South item in the plan. That's probably in my district, the thing I hear most frequently from constituents is the, the concerns about safety and getting from some of the neighborhoods that recently developed in the Arboga area to Arboga Elementary. And so that, that will be extremely beneficial for that community. Also, great to see the, the levy path on the list, you know, and to supervisor Blazer's comment, I know that dovetails with both the Three Rivers Trail Network, the other by the Yuba Water Agency, as well as Secog's Regional Trails Master Plan. I know that's in both of those as well. And then, of course, the rails to trails is also exciting in that particular route kind of through Arboga and Olivehurst to provide kind of some, some connectivity without folks having to go all the way over to the, to the levy to go north and south through that area. So anyway, thank you very much.
In regards to connectivity, the pedestrian bike bridge across the river from Olivehurst to South Yuba City, I didn't see that.
You're gonna be looking a long time.
Seth, we do have that bridge. It's called the Union Pacific Trussel.
South Yuba City from.
They have to go north, and then they go.
So if we could add that, that would be great.
Good comments. Any public comment on this item?
I wanted to add a comment through the chair. Thank you for a great presentation. I recently got into e-biking and rode my bike from my house in Hallwood out to the Yuba County Airport to pay my hangar rent through town front in Aaron's a month or so ago. And the only place I really felt unsafe was in front of the Yuba County Airport. Because it was, it's like the white line and no more pavement after that. So it would really be nice to have a bike trail out.
It used to be a form of exercise before the assist.
It's still a lot of exercise.
Be strong, be out there. Survival of the fittest.
Yeah. Through the chair, and that was on the Arboga North section of, of the plan. So that's, that's great to hear that feedback as well. So that's, as future grant cycles come up, we'll definitely keep that in.
So this item is up for approval. If we have a motion.
I'll move, I'll second.
You have a motion and a second?
Comment?
Public comment?
Yeah, I think I asked for a public comment, maybe. Yes. Any public comment? All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? And, and we're going to convert that trussel to a pedestrian bikeway also. Okay, so we have, we have approval to pass the motion, so motion is approved. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next item we don't see very often, it's an item of public interest. This is presented by the treasure tax collector. Approve a secondhand dealer's license for quality thrift and collectibles. Julie.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Julie Turk. I'm with the Treasure and Tax Collector's Office. In February of 2024, our office was provided with an application for a secondhand dealer's license for quality thrift and collectibles from Henry Press. Per Yuba County Ordinance Code 635080, the Board of Supervisors is the, is the approving authority for this license. In April of 2024, we did hear back from the Sheriff's Department, because one of the parts of the process is, once the application is received from the applicant, we have to forward that information onto the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department has to conduct an investigation and then provide their opinion. Their opinion did not come back favorable. So at this point, it is my understanding that the Sheriff's Department objects to the license, but ultimately it is the board's decision.
Well, there's a couple of questions on the, who would like to go first?
Through the chair. Yeah. I've had personal adventure with this, this type of situation. My father was the automotive industry, and he had a little checkered past, but he got over it. And from my, my perspective as somebody who's had live interaction with a released felon, you know, he's, he's done his time, which is considering the way we're letting people out right now is a lot, a lot better than those people have. But they've got enough things to overcome in the 30 or 40 years to me seems enough time to, he's actually stabilized. And since his last arrest, you know, you're on tuck 21 years. Okay, he's got to see some light, he's got to have some hope. And I would like to move to approve their secondhand dealer's license based upon the time lapse between going to jail and trying to make, make a living. And it hasn't been very easy in the last, you know, 10 years for ex-cons, so.
So we'll probably have more board comment. I've got a couple of things to say. Anybody else on the board?
I'm, I'm curious about the model of the industry. So secondhand thrift is a thrift store or does a pawn shop?
So a pawn dealer needs a pawn dealer's license. It's secondhand merchandise, how they acquired it. I, I don't know.
So normal thrift store who like, somebody donated some clothing, goodwill type situation would not be in this category. It's because it's a pawn shop that it's in this category?
No, so they applied for a secondhand dealer's license, not a pawn broker's license.
Okay.
So if it's a secondhand dealer's license, it's like the Goodwills or the Salvation Armies, if I have secondhand items.
Not going to be a pawn shop of any sort?
Not to my knowledge. It was applied for as a secondhand dealer.
Okay, and then I guess my next question is, is most businesses don't have to apply for licenses to, because there's no business license model for our county, right?
We have a handful that do require a business license, but there are several that do not. So secondhand dealers are one of the types of business models that does require a business license.
Perfect. So any thrift shop requires this sort of license, and it comes through the county, and it comes through your office, which also seems odd.
Because we are the ex officio license issuer.
Okay.
So we're, we're required to issue the licenses. The approval for this particular license would come from the board.
Okay.
Every license.
Most of the things go through the clerk recorders, that's why it's just a.
So the fictitious business name statements would go through their department, but an actual license comes through our department. And there are very few that require it. If it was brand new items like Walmart, the Walmarts and the Coscos of the world and the unincorporated area of Yuba County do not have to have a business.
So if he had import-export from China and was selling not Fentanyl, but something else, then it would not require a license.
Yeah.
Only because it's gently used clothing that it requires.
Anything that is used, secondhand used gently, partially or otherwise, yes, would need a secondhand dealer's license.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
So probably typically the products sold are coming from maybe garage sales or people dropping things off or whatever.
It could be any one of those sources and several others.
Yes. So there's no requirement of that type of business to eliminate people that have any kind of past criminal record? I don't know if I phrased that right.
No, so the ordinance just states that any person that is applying for this license has to go, the application has to be provided to the Sheriff's Department. They are required to fingerprint, photograph the applicant, and make an investigation of the applicant and the proposed place of business, and then report their recommendation to the board. And that's really the only extra, extra step that has to be done in their application process, other than providing us with the physical application and paying the business license fee.
Okay, so probably not considered a public safety thing at this point. Okay.
That would really be a question for the Sheriff's Department.
I don't have any other questions. Does anybody on, on the board have a question? Do we have any?
One, one more note.
Probably comments.
I, I do appreciate, I do, through the chair, I, I do appreciate the sheriff's letter, letting us know about the history, because I think it is useful to know those things. But strangely, I concur with Andy somehow. And 20 years, 20 years seems like a, a good time to allow compassion and grace, which is not a spring of fountain that, that I expect from you. But thank you. So I, I will second the motion.
I believe we're done with board comments. Any public comments? So do we have a motion? Oh, we had an early motion, but we'll still accept it. And we do have a second. All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. We have one, two, three, four, and I, I was on one opposition.
Okay, well, thank you. We will issue the license, and it will be good for one year.
Okay, thanks. I believe we're up to ordinances and public hearings. So Izzy, can you read this statement for us?
Item of public interest? Are we skipping that or is it time-specific?
I think we just did that.
Oh, never mind. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I'm drinking coffee.
Because I would.
It'll, it'll take a hold.
I thought for a minute we did miss it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, ordinances and public hearings, Izzy.
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notion, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Yeah, our first item is 145, 2024 Community Development Services, and this would be Sam Bunton.
Good morning to the board again, Sam Bunton, Public Works. So this is the second out of a three-step process for this district. We'll be back at a later meeting requesting a budget adoption. And so for today's item, there's no change in the assessment or diagram for this district from last fiscal year. And the current assessment is $13.20 per unit. And today, we recommend board approval of the attached resolution confirming the diagram and assessments within the Glad Hill Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2425. Any questions?
Okay, at this point, I think we open the public hearing. And do we have any board comments? No board comments, any public comments? And we are closing the public hearing before the vote. This is a roll call vote. Izzy or Mary? Oh, yes, we should probably get a motion. We have a motion and a second, and a second, and a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is also Sam Bunton, and this is 146, public hearing. Go ahead.
Sam Bunton, Public Works, similar to Glad Hill, but this one for the Linda Street Lighting Maintenance District. One difference, this is the first out of the two-step process, but similar to Glad Hill, we'll be back at a later board meeting requesting budget adoption. And another annual item, so we'll keep it short and sweet. Today, we recommend determining and opposing assessments within the Linda Street Lighting District for fiscal year 2425. The proposed assessment is $12 per unit, which is also the same as last fiscal year.
At this point, we will open the public hearing. And do we have any board comments? I see none, any public comments? No. Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The public hearing. And we have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. We have a little correspondence. The board may direct any item of informational correspondence to a department head for appropriate action. Mary, we had one correspondence, what was it?
Item 238-2024, received independent financial audit statement from Linda County Water District for calendar year ending June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. And now I think we're going to do the board and staff members' reports, starting with Andy.
Talking so far, so I'm gonna skip.
Seth?
This has been a great day all around. So I had a good meeting with Mr. Sam Button and Drainage and his crew a couple weeks ago, talking about our stormwater ditches and all that sort of thing. So really good stuff. What we didn't talk about enough was bridges. So I still need a plan for bridges, bridges, maybe two, I think maybe three bridges. That would be great. And thanks for the conversation yesterday where you clarified sidewalks happening in West Linda, that was also helpful. So props to Sam. I guess I should also then give props to Mr. Kevin over there. Is he still there? He is. And he was handling complaints from citizens about our new ordinance with solar, and we worked out what option was that they didn't want to exercise. But he's going to explain to me more about our general plan and how we are going to make Yuba County great again. I went to 175th anniversary with some board members, and that was nice to see that tradition and history here. I don't want to out anybody for their Illuminati connection, so I won't say any names.
That was some Masonic Lodge.
And then, of course, we did a great job with the Unz Festival, yeah, once again. I saw a couple of people out there doing the good work, so it was a pleasure to be there. Upcoming, we have Bugs, which is the Kiwanis Bringing Up Grades Program, giving out bikes to kids who improve their grades in middle school. And so that is a fantastic program. I encourage people to be part of it. Kiwanis are also having their fishing derby this Saturday, which will then be followed by a MONG celebration of veterans at the veteran park. So all sorts of good things. And then the Meals for Wheels flyer that I gave to our chair, I'm sure he will talk about, because he was supposed to do that at the beginning of the meeting, but somehow neglected to.
I'm new. Are you done, Seth? Okay, Gary?
So I've had quite a bit of water agency items the last couple of weeks, but on the county side, I think the theme is Secog, 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 Secog. Starting off with a Secog Beal tour that happened a couple of weeks ago. It was leadership from Secog came up. We did a tour of Beal Air Force Base, all-day tour. We really wanted to help convey the importance of Beal to the regional economy and also the importance of Beal to our national security. I think that was accomplished. Beal will actually be presenting at the Secog Board Meeting on Friday or Thursday morning. So time to kind of continue the message of conveying to the Secog Board the importance of Beal to the region and to the nation. And Secog continues to work on the 2025 blueprint, which is the Regional Land Use and Transportation Plan. We had a deep dive between myself, some Secog staff, and some county staff on some of the plans with respect to transportation and land use projections for the Yuba County area. That was an excellent meeting where we were able to dive into a few of our concerns and questions. This Thursday and Friday is an RCRC board meeting, so I'll be participating in that. And then in the South County. And then in the South County, we have some great events coming, going on this weekend. So first of all, the 100th Annual Wheatland Pet Parade. So in the morning on Saturday, bring your pet down to Wheatland and walk in the pet parade. Later in the day, Wheatland will be celebrating their 150th birthday of their incorporation. So that's also very exciting that actually those events go well into the night, it looks like from the schedule. So if you go to Wheatland 150 on Facebook, you can get a lot of information about that. Also at it Beal is the Beal Auto Show. I think it's from like 11 to three on Saturday. So plenty of things to do in the south part of the county. And so that's it.
John?
Okay, so happenings in District Five. This Thursday is the Be Prepared Fair in Brownsville, Thursday at five. You can all come up and support all the different county departments. Friday, there's a spaghetti dinner at the Hallwood Church for the Hallwood 4H. Also Friday, Brownsville Farmers Market is kicking off. Starts, I think, at four o'clock every Friday afternoon all summer. And then Saturday is the Dobbins Farmers Market on Saturday mornings. You guys come up there and support. And the following Monday, Memorial Day, the 27th, I will be cooking chicken again at the Lo Marica Lions for the Veterans BBQ. Veterans eat free. Last year, I was able to coordinate a flyby from the Yuba Sutter Sheriff's Arrow Squadron. Try to work that again, but yeah, it's a good event, Lo Marica.
Thank you. County Council?
Just happy to be here and thank you for the nice welcome from everyone.
Kevin?
Just a couple of quick things. So quarterly updates. Just to make sure the board's aware, our quarterly updates from HHS, Community Development and the Public Safety Groups, those are on our county website. And so it's, it's, it is a resource that the board ever wants to revisit those or share them, you know, with your constituents. They're, they're there. The, the other thing I wanted to bring up was, we received notice that the CPUC is looking, it looks like they're going to deny AT&amp;T's request to get out of the landline business. If you recall, AT&amp;T, I was saying basically the old phone line business isn't is, isn't a great business to be in anymore. So we want, we want relief from that, that obligation. And, and the CPUC, it looks like they're going to deny that request, which will be great as we do have a lot of folks that rely on those landlines. And then I was going to ask Karen Fasser with HR to come up if she could and inform the board of kind of a milestone for the county as far as our efforts with Blue Zone.
Thanks, Karen.
Chair and Board?
Good morning.
Karen with HR. So I'm really pleased to share that the Government Center is officially a Blue Zones approved work site as of last week. And I wanted to also let you know that we'll be planning a celebration. It'll be for some time in late June here at the Government Center. So we're hoping that you all can attend and I will share date and time very soon. We're, we're in the planning of that all. And this initiative supports a county initiative related to our organizational culture. We're excited to move on to some of our other work sites next. And you'll keep hearing these as we get one work site after another approved. Thank you.
Yeah, Blue Zones is a huge plus for our, our two counties, actually. And I think they're halfway through their five-year program. So I think everything they're doing is, you know, should be ongoing and last, we hope.
I, I hope so as well. It's a good initiative.
Yeah, thank you. Mary, anything from the clerk of the board? So in Marysville, each festival is almost upon us. That's in July, but they're already doing initial planning for that. There's a lot of events that are going on all the time. The downtown association seems to be coming together a little bit to try to better have a liaison with, with the city hall and work out new projects. I want to make a mention about the loss of Hyman Chime. I think most of you know Hyman or by one way or the other. He passed away a week ago. And his whole family is just, you know, it's a cornerstone, basically, of Marysville. So I wanted to make a mention of that today. He's been, you know, a great, you know, a, a great influence on the city of Marysville and his whole family. So I just want to make a mention of the passing of Hyman Chime, and I think that's all I have. We are going to take a break and then we're going to close session.
Through the chair.
Wheels on wheels.
Yes, you already mentioned that, didn't you?
Anything wanted more from that flyer? I will take the flyer back.
Oh.
Through the chair. Are you going to adjourn in memory of?
Well, I wanted to say before that, it's just while there were still people here, so.
Okay.
But I can also adjourn in memory of Hyman Chime when we come to that. So we're going to take about a 10-minute break, which should put us at 11:13.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
In the heart of Yuba County's wine country lies a quiet estate, surrounded by tall pines, a lake with waterfowl and fish, and room to party, eat hearty, engage in nuptials.
I do.
Sit quietly by the fire pit and sample Yuba Foothill's Vintner's finest. French Town Inn, just 38 minutes from Marysville, a world away from cares.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.